We'll call a meeting to order and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Belsley.
Here.
Blounier.
Here.
Herr.
Here.
Lehman.
Newman.
Here.
Parrott.
Here.
We have a call.
Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no public hearings tonight, and I don't know any presentations or special reports. Anybody in the public like to make a comment? Hearing none. The consent agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes, the regular meeting August 20th, 2018, and the approval of the bills.
I'm going to motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments? Call the roll.
Belsley.
Yes.
Blounier.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I have nothing tonight, village clerk.
Nothing tonight, your honor.
Village administrator.
I have one item tonight, your honor. It's Resolution Number 09-19, which is a resolution authorizing agreement with the Norton Police Patrol Officers and Sergeants as members of the Police Benevolent Labor Committee.
Would you like to give us a summary of that?
Because I'll make a motion to approve at this point.
I'll second.
Okay.
And so, go ahead.
Number one, I want to apologize for the lateness of this information to you. It basically, language was still being ironed out as of Thursday of last week. The union voted on Friday to approve the contract as it was written. And so, I've just written up and presented to each one of you, I believe, a summary of the highlights of the contract. Number one is they will receive raises based on the arbitrator's decision. They will receive raises as of May 1st, 2016, of two and a quarter, May 1st, 2017, of two and a quarter, May 1st, 2018, of two and a half, and May 1st, 2019, of two and a half. Also, based on the arbitrator's decision was the health insurance contribution for the employees. May 1st, 2016 through April 30th, 2018 is staying the same. A single employee pays nothing. Employee with child or children pays $75 a month. Employee with a spouse pays $100 a month, and employee with family will pay $125. Beginning May 1st, 2018 through April 30th, 2019, a single employee will pay $50 a month. Employee with a child or children will pay $100 a month. Employee with a spouse will pay $125, and employee with family will pay $150. And then, beginning May 1st, 2019, through the contract's expiration of April 30th, 2020, a single employee will pay $75 a month. Employee with a child or children will pay $125 a month. Employee plus spouse will be $150 a month. An employee plus family will be $175. In addition to what the arbitrator decided upon, we had an agreement. Their uniform allowance had previously been for the patrol officers $800 per year, plus $125 every other year for boots. And we have eliminated the boot allowance, and we will pay them $950 a year for both from here on out. Plainclothes officers previously had received an additional $150 per year for their uniform allowance, and so that will increase to $200 per year. Previously, a patrol officer acting as a supervisor for the day was paid $1.50 per hour additional on top of their normal wage, and that will go to $25 per eight-hour day. We are revising the sick leave to basically align with the new state statute of using sick time for family members, which changed, is that, 2017? January 1st, I think, of 2017, but this will incorporate that law into their contract. We are adding the ability for them to be able to donate sick leave to coworkers who are at a serious illness and have used all, exhausted all their personal sick time. There are some additional small language changes. Vacation time, we tweaked a little bit, a little other things. The one thing I forgot to add to this that I thought after I did it, they will also, originally when we started negotiating, they wanted us to establish a retired health savings account and basically pay them at their retirement into a health savings account for them, the balance of the value of their sick time that they had accumulated and not used, which would have been thousands of dollars. We were able to get them to agree that basically, at this point, any employee who has reached the maximum of 960 hours of sick time each month would not be able to receive any additional time, so they will receive a stipend of $50 for the month. And that is pretty much just... Pardon?
There was an additional on residency of this 15 miles. It changed to 20 miles, excluding the canine officer, which has to be there in the village or the township.
So, I think that's the highlights of the changes that were put into this contract versus the old contract. As I said, the old contract actually expired April 30th, 2016. We've been negotiating since March of 2016, and so we'll be negotiating again in another year, probably.
Any comments on the board?
I guess I would just like to note that this isn't exactly what we preferred and made in our final offer, and it's a little richer than, I think, what we all wanted to see.
Right.
But we had no choice. It was the arbitrator's decision, and unfortunately, that's the way it is.
We were really close on wages as far as raises for the employees. Actually, ours was a little higher overall, but the health insurance contributions, we were wanting it basically to be almost double what it is, but we lost that in arbitration, so.
And that's what's going to hurt with healthcare costs.
Yeah. It's only getting worse.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Call the roll.
Herr.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Blounier.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Chief of police.
Nothing tonight, your honor.
But you are ready for the world fair.
My auxiliary are signing up as we speak.
Corporation counsel.
A few things tonight, your honor. The first thing is approval of zoning amendment, petition 18-06ZA, which is a petition to rezone 309 Baumann Avenue from B2 to R2.
And do you see any problem with that?
The Plan Commission recommended approval, and our Director of Planning and Zoning had no concerns himself.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other comments? Call the roll.
Blounier.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Lehman.
Or Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Motion passes.
The next matter on the agenda for tonight is informational only, pertains to case number 18-07ZA/SP, which was a request to rezone property and to award a special use permit to allow a solar farm on property off Lakeland and Main Street, North Main Street. That matter was continued by the Plan Commission as a request to petition. There was substantial public interest in this, so they left it on the agenda so that it could be noted for any members of the public interested in monitoring those proceedings that it will be before the Plan Commission at a future meeting. The next matter for your consideration would be approval of preliminary and final plats for Ross Southside Subdivision.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
This hearing was held before the Plan Commission. Approval was recommended, and our Director of Planning and Zoning had no concerns.
Any comment? Call the roll.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Blounier.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next ordinance I have for you for your consideration in action is Ordinance 19-11, which is an ordinance making amendments to the Morton Municipal Code regarding mobile home plumbing inspection fees.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
This amendment was proposed at the request of the Director of Planning and Zoning in consultation with our contracted inspector. We had a fee schedule placed for plumbing inspections, and it pertained to the number of fixtures. In a mobile home situation, we're not inspecting connections to fixtures, but one main connection from the village to the mobile home, so a new fee of a flat $100 was deemed to be appropriate by Director of Planning and Zoning and our inspector.
Any comments? Call the roll.
Parrott.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Blounier.
Yeah.
Herr.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next, I have Ordinance 19-12, which is an ordinance making amendments to the Morton Municipal Code regarding inspection fees for generators.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
This ordinance also generates, at the recommendation of the Director of Planning and Zoning in consultation with our electrical inspector, we have under our code presently a flat fee of $100 for inspections for generators, both residential and commercial. This amendment would remove the flat fee of $100 for commercial generators, and therefore put those projects within the ordinary fee schedule. Based on the differences between the work of the inspector and the work involved in those two projects, it was deemed that commercial generator installs best fit under our existing fee schedule without creating a separate or different classification.
Any comments?
Pat, do you know, or does this put it on, how does this compare to other neighboring communities? I don't want to put us at a disadvantage, but I see the need for this, and it's important to have this in place. I'm just curious how it might compare.
We already inspect them in terms of how our inspection fees parallel other communities. The honest answer is I didn't do an inventory before or in conjunction with preparing this ordinance, so I can't specifically speak to that, though I'd be happy to get to that information.
Roger may know that.
Pat?
Yes.
Then, do I understand that the fee would be based on the value?
That's correct.
Okay.
The cost of the contract, essentially.
Okay, even if it's just the generator project, it would be the value of the project, and the fee would be based on that?
That's correct.
Any other comments? Call the roll.
Belsley.
Yes.
Blounier.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Motion passes.
The next item on the agenda in my final preparations tonight, I noted that by inadvertent admission of my office, which I apologize for, the last draft of this ordinance got remitted to the board, and in your board packets instead of the final draft of this ordinance, I had made a couple minor changes in conjunction with Craig, and I'm very sorry that the final version didn't get in, so I would ask that this matter would be tabled by the board to your second meeting this month, where it'd be up for final approval. And that'd be ordinance, I'd request action to table ordinance 19-13 and ordinance opposing demolition standards for structures within the Village Board.
Does anybody have any questions on that ordinance that Pat would need to look at?
Would you still try to maintain the timeline of having it out by October 1st?
Yes. And that's one of the clarification points that was made in the last revision of the ordinance, which isn't reflected in the one that's in your packets.
Okay, thanks.
Are we allowed to discuss this a little bit at this point? I read in, I guess it was your memo, that this was intended to clean up some, I guess, sites that have been demolished over the years and haven't been really completed, I guess. How do you envision, I guess, I'm going to be very specific, South Main Street, the Stansza property, I guess, Stansza, whatever. How would this ordinance, what would change down there?
So, what would happen after this ordinance is adopted for any existing demolition sites which don't comply with the standards contained in the ordinance? So, the South Main Street property is an example. That's a location where there's remaining concrete which wasn't removed, which has left different grades, potential slip, trip, and fall hazards, hazards to the public. What I would envision doing from an enforcement standpoint is notifying all those property owners, once the ordinance is adopted, notifying them of the deadline. As the deadline approaches, I would anticipate follow-up correspondence for the sites which haven't been rectified. Ultimately, if a property owner does not bring his property into compliance, we have a mechanism of ordinance violation citations and the fine power they're under to ensure compliance or specific action in the circuit court for an order compelling compliance. We certainly, the draft ordinance proposes a one-year period of time for those existing demolition sites to come into compliance, and so we certainly understand there's a fair window of time needed, and we hope to strike a fair balance by picking that date, but does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think, excuse me, Craig.
I just wanted to add to this, I mean, we started this discussion a long time ago. The original intent was not these. We don't have a demolition permit. I just wanted to add that, and that was always the push, really, on the other side, to make sure we had our inspections in there for sanitary laterals, storm, you know, connections.
Safety.
In the intent of fires, to be able to expedite that process. But as we kept discussing it, we started looking at everything, and then these kind of came into play in discussions, amongst myself, Roger, Pat. I just wanted to add that there's a lot more importance to this than even just that, just a demolition permit in general, just to kind of clean that up.
We have open foundations out there. We have slabs in areas. We have bolts taken out of slabs. We have loading docks still there with the building gone. These areas aren't going to get developed until that stuff is cleaned up.
Do we have, do we have sanitary sewer stubs to some of those old building sites?
We do, too, like the old Pepper Mill out there. We do have some out there, yeah.
Nothing there. I know, it's mostly warehouse, but...
The old LS property, we did get involved with that quite a bit. They were pretty easy to work with, to clean that up, you know, after the fire and the subsequent demolition years later, to at least, and that was an ugly one. I mean, we did a lot of reconnaissance with the owner, with the plumber in there, because we didn't even know where anything went. So, that one worked. The old Stanco property that's there, I mean, I think there's just questions there. In general, we don't know where everything's at out there. I hope that answers your question. And we've kind of discussed the big properties that would be affected, and that was a concern, you know, in talking to Pat, that given some timeframe with this, if we're going to be, you know, retroactive going after these sites due to safety, due to, you know, other things. So, I'm glad we're discussing it tonight.
I think, I think it's a good thing to try to get some of these, these old sites that have been torn down, kind of cleaned up, maybe turned back to green space available for another development, perhaps.
And we discuss these properties all the time with development people coming in. Not that that's the reason for this, but I think some of these properties will move once that hurdle gets out of the way. But I'll be honest, I don't, I don't know if we've, I mean, well, the old, you know, Portland and North Morton's been there for quite some time, as long as I can remember. You know, those are areas that I think people want to develop. You know, the old LS property is just sitting there.
And we don't want any more burned-out buildings that leave foundations.
But that was our original concern with the LS, was the, we had several loading docks exposed, and if you've seen that property, I mean, people, I mean, we got a fruit stand on it. We got people that run across it. I mean, it's an access point. To me, it's a safety issue. It needs cleaned up. I think that's even where this permit adds fencing to our permit, you know, cleans up and expedite some of that, but I mean, I would, I don't see how anyone can't walk by that site and say that it's not a liability concern, you know, for safety. That's my opinion.
So, how many properties roughly would be impacted by this?
I'm not sure, you know, it's...
Is it survey, or?
Yeah, in terms of, there are several sites, most of which have been mentioned tonight, that we're specifically aware of and have been brought to code enforcement, concerned prior to the adoption. It is multifaceted, and it both addresses cleaning up existing sites and setting a precedent procedure for new. Roughly, I think Craig's probably named all the ones that I...
I mean, we can name a handful, five, right now, but I think that's where we talked about, you know, if we get a little momentum here with this, then Roger and I'll do a comprehensive review of the whole town and look at those areas of concern. Obviously, trying to be consistent with the policy. We don't want to pick on one person as opposed to the other, but I would say by the time we're done, there's probably 10 properties would be my guess that come, that come to play. And I think that's where I've asked counsel and Pat to assist us with that process, if approved, on how to reach out to those owners, too. You know, be consistent with that, and have him reach out to them, is would be my preference at the same time. And then, then it's all just going forward, and keep a tabs on everything going forward. When there's demolition, it will control the timeframe, the safety issues, the utility issues, and then hopefully going forward, we don't have these issues into the future. But I wanted to add that, that that wasn't the original intent, was to go after these properties. It was just when we started looking at everything, it's like, well, how do we take care of these? And that's kind of what we, talking with Pat, you know, there's a, there's a way to do that, so we chose to continue working towards that, and look forward to your guys' review and continued discussion on that. I'm glad it's going to another meeting. Honestly, I would hope there be some public input on this one, in my opinion.
One of the, the two areas where there's changes, the drafts you have in front of you is in Section 4-5-3, there was a permit amount, and in our first, the last draft before the final draft, we had a blank in there. We've discussed $250 is the amount of the permit fee, so the updated draft will be included in your next board packet will provide that amount. The other area which was revised was Section 4-5-6, which is a grandfathering provision, and it was rewritten in a way that provided the specific date referenced in my memo, and I thought better addressed existing sites. So, those are the two places where there's been substantive provisions, which we'll see in the next draft you receive in your next board package.
That 4-5-5, is that date incorrect?
Excuse me, I might have misspoke. I, when I said 4-5-6, I intended to refer to 4-5-5, yes. The new date would be October 1, 2019.
2019, alright.
That's, I apologize, I misspoke. That's the section where there's been revision.
And that number's more just, hey, is a year appropriate? And that's kind of the question to all of you. We felt like a year was appropriate. Just go get that work done and go through that process.
Well, some of them have been there 15 years or longer. I did talk to one large developer, and he backed out because the concrete was still there. So, it doesn't help. There is a safety issue, and I don't think it represents Morton. Any other comments?
I think, just for procedural note, if we could just have a vote from you guys to table that, since it was on the agenda, if we could get a motion to...
I'd move to table.
First and second?
Call the roll. Blounier.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
The next matter I have for you tonight is Ordinance 19-14, which is an ordinance making amendments to the Morton Municipal Code to impose inspections for stakeout footing and foundations.
Kind of motion?
So moved.
Second.
Alright.
This ordinance is derivative of conversations which Craig and I have had regarding how to potentially identify earlier and prevent problems which often surface towards the end of building construction projects, when you have homes that aren't staked out right, or homes with elevation issues, or homes that aren't built in accordance with the plans that are submitted to the village to get your building permits. So, we're, the ordinance would impose a stakeout inspection, a footing inspection, and a foundation inspection, and our expectation is that during those inspections, especially the stakeout and the footing inspection, but really during all of them, it's our expectation that contractor and/or the homeowner is going to have to demonstrate that they've staked the property out in compliance with the plans they've submitted to us. We're going to want to see lot pins. We're going to want to verify side setbacks, front setbacks, elevations, so that we can ensure before concrete's in that if there's an issue, we identify it.
Craig, would you, we had a discussion this afternoon, so...
Yeah, this one's been, another one's been discussed for quite some time. We go year by year in continual issues. I will say, there's a lot of good contractors out there. I don't think this will affect them, because they got a plan, and we know where the, you know, they follow through, and the elevations are where they need to be, and the setbacks are, but I'll be honest, I had a discussion with Roger probably a year ago, and I think even in my time here, we've had three out of setback. No offense, it's embarrassing to come sit here and know that and get a variance for those. We can't prevent that with our current ordinance, the way we do things. So, I think this just at least puts that line in there that, you know, that puts the responsibility on them. When they're ready to give us notice, call us out there, and we're out there, you know, to verify, and that's horizontal and vertical. I think on the residential homes where we've seen a lot of problem, and I'll be honest, I have a hard time understanding this, but I think a lot of the earthwork contractors, the ones digging out the basement, are dictating what the elevation of the house is going to be on the fly. I truly believe that. After the last few years, sometimes the prime contractor's not in control of that, and to me, I've always been where we don't want to establish on the construction plans what, you know, when we develop a subdivision, we could put, like some communities, what the first floor elevation is going to be, and just put an elevation on there. I've been against that. I like to give them a little bit of, you know, a little bit of thought to that, put it where they want. But our biggest thing is, when you submit a plan and we approve it, we expect you to build it through the lines and grades of that plan. That is not happening, and I don't believe without this that we can stop that from going forward. And these are continual complaints from, you know, residents adjacent to another resident. I had one just the other day, you know, where the house is so much higher than the other one. No, those are things at least, at minimum, we can review it and at least verify, but, you know, those, you know, we don't know sometimes. I think we've, I've dealt with some of you even here on the board that have, you know, had homes and dealt with the same thing, so I think this cleans it up. We've really worked hard, so it's not a burden to them as much. You know, the biggest thing, hopefully it goes smooth. We submit the plan early on is the key, and we're doing that now. Submit your plan. We are reviewing it, you know, for top of foundation elevation, grades, all that now. We're doing that. This would just be a matter of, hey, verify this when we get out to the field. We don't intend to make this a harder process for the contractor. We just want to make it, make sure it limits the issues that we've been having, and I think this solves it.
But there's no guessing on the property line, because this puts it on the contractor to find the property line. We had one home five feet over on the neighbor's property, so there's no more just going there and thinking that's the lot line, but it puts it on the contractor, so when we come out, inspect it, they have to show us the pins, we verify.
And the biggest thing really was the foundation one at the end. There's three steps to this, stakeout, footing, foundation. Hopefully, the stakeout and the footing is, we kind of catch the things before, but we're going out to sites, and sometimes it's not even shown that it's going to be a lookout or a walkout on the plans. And to me, that's not acceptable. We're running into issues out on the site that when you go out, the foundation's done, you know. This'll, this, what we're doing now, plus this, will clean that up. The stakeout and the footing was kind of implemented as a chance to at least get out there and head off that problem, but really, it's the foundation and verifying, you know, prior to that being poured, that we can verify the setback, the elevation, all that, sign off on it, and then pour your foundation, and we shouldn't have any issues going forward.
Is it, is it the expectation or the assumption that the homeowner, the contractor, and a city employee will be there to all understand together what the expectation is, so there's no question down the road?
You know, that's a good question you asked there, because that's another thing that I've, I have, I personally... I've, I have, I personally am sure Roger's got more than me, but I've got calls from, you know, I grew up here. I know a lot of people. They put, the homeowner puts a lot of expectation on us of things. And granted, I think that's their responsibility when they build a home, but they don't know what we're doing and what we're not doing. And there's a lot of expectation on them to verify, you know, the elevation or the setback or where a house is. There's a lot of expectation on us, and I think that cleans some of that up. I don't know if we need to meet with both of them. You know, and that's the other difficult thing is, it's the, it's the homeowner, and we should have some more ordinances coming forward on some of these things, but, you know, it's the homeowner that pulls the permit.
I just-
And the contractor is really responsible. Correct me if I'm wrong, Pat. That, that in and of itself creates some issues of what you're talking about.
I just think if there's a formal meeting between the three people in the final layout of what the expectation is, there should be no question. Everybody signs off and says, I agree.
Yeah.
There's no question.
I'd say the majority are dealing with the contractor, but there are some where we're dealing with the homeowner and the contractor too. You know, that's Brad, Jamie, Roger, myself on some occasions.
Craig, when you, when you receive a permit, application for a building permit for a new construction, residential new construction, well, you said some don't even show that they're having a walkout and they end up with a walkout, but are they, are they showing some detailed grade elevations at foundation, that kind of thing?
Yes, and that's something we've been working on. I will say as of today and as of, actually earlier this year, Brad, Roger and I met on a house and started kind of a, you know, we've got a one sheet kind of summary to walk through with the contractor to verify those things. But we're doing that now. Exterior earth grades, first floor. I mean, there's some frustration on a builder from having to go through that, but we're making them submit that. We're trying to ease, ease that along so they don't have to hire an engineer or a, you know, a CAD draftsman to draw that up. So some, as long as they're to scale, they're doing it by hand. But we are getting those out of the, of the past year. And I think, you know, controlling a lot of things, although there's still some issues out there.
But we had one home moved quite, quite a bit forward on a lot, which created issues, easements and everything else, so it wasn't done per drawings. And we need to catch this stuff because it affects the neighboring property owners from runoff to easements, and we have to have the ability to stop them.
So we tried an informal process a year ago, and it just hasn't, I mean, it's been good, but it hasn't worked. As far as all the little things like, hey, where's, they don't, they, they hadn't been putting the actual elevation on there. But, you know, you have the discussion, where's it going to be? I had one, you know, this past year that said, well, it's easy, Craig. I'm going to put it in between the house on the left and the house on the right. It's going to be-
Which might, which might both be wrong.
Which might both be wrong, yes. But then we go out there and he didn't do that. You know, but, but now by the time we get back out, the foundation's done. I mean, it's, you guys know, that's why we've granted variances with things off setback. It's harder to go in reverse then. When there was nothing on the plan, it's more that trust. So yeah, a lot of issues with that.
So in your, the subdivision plans, in Morton, you're establishing some finished grade elevations for each building pad, right?
Yes, 100%.
Showing on those plans?
Yes.
And are you pretty much working with those elevations, comparing them with what's submitted with your building permit?
Yep, and we, we let them use that as a basis. Sometimes the shape of what it is is different. But if they want to change it, we're open to revising that. They just have to resubmit something that shows what it is. But yeah, any subdivision now has a specific sheet that's a basically home grading plan to deal with that.
But Rod, your idea of meeting the homeowner, homeowner isn't all bad, because the typical homeowner really puts that responsibility on the contractor and the village to be right.
The homeowner is the eventual owner of the house, whether it's right or wrong.
Right.
They should be as involved as anybody else.
And I truly believe that 100% of homeowners, granted, we don't have a fee in here for this at this point, but with no fee, 100% of homeowners will appreciate this ordinance, from my experience, 100%.
The homeowners really expect the village to make sure it's right.
And those are the hard phone calls.
Even though they don't understand that, for the most part, we really weren't looking at that.
And those are the hard phone calls.
So 15 minutes ago, Craig referred to somebody on the board who has a home that was messed up. That was mine.
There's others that have, not just you, but yes. And we've dealt, before I worked here, I dealt with yours a little bit. You know, there's a lot of lots in Morton, and we, we deal with them. You know, I had one in Thornridge the other day. If you look even at our budget, we've, it's always been in there, the 50-50, if there's a drainage issue to try to resolve some of those. Morton's flat, but there's a lot of subdivisions that they built up against, you know, the, the fields and didn't control that back, you know, the back drainage. And then the next ones come, well, guess what? It's a swamp back there. We're, we are dealing with those all the time, and they're hard to even resolve. My neighborhood holds water, yours on your street, you know. And when I started seven years ago, I was dealing with some of those with my former, and he was building a house. So that was, that was a passion when I started, to not have these drainage issues in the back of these homes, and that's why we've been pushing a lot of this.
We, we have had, you know, to your point as to what a homeowner expects the village to do versus the contractor to do, this is a part of several ordinances we have worked on, from the occupancy permits ordinance to this one. We're also working on a site grading plan ordinance. And these ordinances will add some, some work for the builders, but, you know, there are some things that were, I think, the average homeowner has expected.
Bless you.
We've all, we would always take care of for them. That's really beyond what past practices, past practices had accounted for. And while certainly, we would continue to encourage homeowners who are building a new home to retain professionals, protect their interest, and to protect their own interest, we are shifting some more burdens to the builders in the permitting process and inspection process, occupancy permit process, in an attempt to build additional consumer protections for, for our citizens.
And you have to remember, it's a personal decision if you decide to build a new home. So you need to be paying the cost for that inspections and everything. So we've been careful not to assume all that. That's why some of this has to be on the contractor. That's who they're paying to build the house. If the city takes on all those bills, we'll be like Peoria and everywhere else, where the inspections and the fees and everything. And I think it's a personal decision, but I think we should be protecting those next door neighbors that have been there, so they don't have water. I personally inspected some houses with Craig one day, and the next door neighbor couldn't even put a sidewalk out his service door because the house was up so high. Well, no, the grade was so low, it's six feet low, and the service door's right here. We've, and the walkout basement house, can you never build a walkout basement on a nice flat level lot? That wasn't the lot for a walkout basement. So when you dig out a backyard like that, you create problems for the neighbors. So we're not trying to dictate what's been done, but we, when they bring in the plans and give us the information, they have to stick to that to protect the neighbors and to protect the citizens, because the amount of work that Roger and Craig is putting forth to this, we don't have enough money to pay the bills. This has gotten a little bit ridiculous.
And we're not trying to create more work for ourselves.
No.
That's what we tried, but, you know, we do have, you know, Brad Marks in our office is probably going to assume the big chunk of this. And I feel like we got the right guy there to assist myself, Jamie and Roger on the day to day in dealing with contractors. So he'll be making more visits to sites and all that, and I think we got the perfect person to be able to deal with it. And that's why we didn't bring it forth, something like this far, even several years ago. So we've got to be prepared to be able to deal with it too.
And in all honesty, we've been practicing with the one sheet and seeing how it works. But I do like Rod's idea of getting the homeowner in there, especially when he has supplied for the permit. He should be knowing who is responsible for what, instead of answering that phone call later, which we've been doing.
Then that person will hold more people accountable.
Correct. And won't write the final check till things are done. I'm not trying to nail, put nails in the coffin that we're all responsible to a certain point.
Right.
I think we're just bringing our ordinance up to what other communities have as an ordinance, finally. Am I incorrect?
I, I mean, we haven't, I mean, Pat, you may have looked at some others. I think we researched some others, not necessarily right around here. But yeah, I would say we're coming up to other people's ordinances, other communities.
We generally, when Craig and I talk about new ordinances, new inspections, one of the things I inventory is what other similar communities in Illinois do, not just in our locality. And when Craig and I talk at least, we don't want to, on some issues, maybe we want to be the stalking horse of the first one out of the gate. A lot of things, we're mindful of not creating the most burden for our contractors, but striking a balance between being proactive and, and reasonable to work with.
Years ago, when that house was five feet over on the neighbor's property, the board talked about us being responsible for all that. I told them, you can't do that. The dirt's eight feet high. Where's the pins? So now this goes on the contractor. Before you dig, you better have us out there checking the pins, so we can see the lines, because if we can't see it, you're going to have to move the dirt. And it's hard to do if the hole's dug. So it's just, over the years, things have developed. The houses are bigger, longer, wider. They take up a lot of the lot. So it's growing pains, and we need to get up to today's standards.
I think it's a good policy. I, I know the staff has been considering this for quite a while, and I know we're, most of us are familiar with a couple of those examples over the, over the years that resulted in, the only recourse is to apply for a variance. And then it's just an awkward situation for the petitioner, for the contractor, for the zoning board of appeals. All around, it's just a bad deal to sort of have to back into granting a variance, and that's your only recourse. And in this case, this is such, it's a very logical solution to get out in, in front of it. And if there is a mistake in the field, it's an easy fix at that point, rather than waiting till the walls go up and the house is enclosed, and then you start looking around and saying that we're a couple of feet off here. So it's, it's a good policy. It's something that's a lot of thought. It's clear that we went into this. And I know that some people may cry, you know, government overreach here, but I think it's, it's warranted. It's, it's a good checks and balance, and I think it's going to save us a lot of grief in the future, as well as the homeowners.
I would agree, Trustee Belsley. And I think the staff has tried to do it without coming to the board, but it's not working. Even with Brad Marks and extra meetings, we're still having problems. So that's created the ordinance, so.
Those might be the first people that actually call when the neighbor's house goes up wrong as well.
So we tried, so. So we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Call the roll.
Herr?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
Belsley?
Yes.
Bluenier?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And thank you for the open, honest debate of that subject. Director of Fire and Emergency Services is in another meeting tonight. Director of Public Works, you have a few items tonight.
Yes. First in front of you is item A. I'd like to ask for approval of a five-year contract extension with Phelps Uniform Company for Public Works Department Uniform Rental.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved. We've been with Phelps for quite a while. Great service. I think a good price. They won the bid. I think we've, three-year contract is what we have right now. And, you know, I've approached them similar as I've approached some others. If you provide good service, it was bid. If you're willing to do it at no cost increase, you know, so I kind of presented it to them, and they came back with wanting a five-year at the same price. So right now, we do rent a few other things, other than the uniforms in this one, as far as the floor mats and fender covers, shop towels. But for the most part, it's 32 employees, and it costs us about $10,000 a year for a uniform rental, which adds up to a little over $300 a year for that. And that's, everything's included. So if there's holes in their stuff, they replace those for free. So this cost is the same for the next five years. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
And by continuing this contract, we don't have to have all the employees try on new clothes, because there's three sets of pants, there's boots or coats. So we don't have to go through all that, and we got it for the same price.
And I was prepared to bid it out, but it is a lot of effort to bid it out. But it's great service. I don't, I don't see the price coming in lower unless it's a penny to beat him. So with that, I, I understand, and I'm glad to bid it out, but I think this is, is a good contract, and I'd love to keep it.
We have better use of your time.
It was, it was bid before, and I can't imagine, I mean, I don't know of anything, the price has gone down, you know, as, as time moves on. So keeping the prices that were bid out three years ago, keeping those for another five years, great, great service. I think that, I think it's good.
We've done that with weed mowing, lawn mowing. I mean, we've saved thousands of dollars and a lot of hours of the staff preparing bid documents. Trustee Bluenier?
I was just going to mention that there's a cooperative with Uniform Rentals on it, and they can't come close to this. So Craig, you have your job. We'll go over there.
Yeah, I appreciate Trustee Bluenier. He had asked me about that too, you know, cooperative.
He's bringing the best value to the city, so.
Well, we did help him with his house, you know. Any other comments? Call the roll.
Newman?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
Belsley?
Yes.
Bluenier?
Yes.
Herr?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next in front of you is item B. I'd like to ask to waive formal bidding and acceptance of proposal from Stewart Spreading for de-watering and hauling bio solids or sludge from wastewater plant number two at a cost of 10 cents per gallon. This also includes a $3,000 mobilization fee. So moved. Second.
Any comments?
You know, obviously this one, I wish we weren't coming to you in this fashion. We felt like, and Superintendent Franty's here too. He's been a superintendent for a short time here. Unfortunately, we did exceed in '17 for arsenic and copper. And talking with the US EPA and our engineers, we just, I mean, this, our, our current permit runs through 2020 to landify sludge in the, in the fields around plant two. But at this point, we don't see where we can continue that process. So this would be a temporary solution. We do use Stewart Spreading at the water treatment plant. But with this approval, you know, we, we plan to start planning a permanent solution, which would be to, you know, de-water, you know, the sludge on site, which would be a significant capital improvement. I feel like we've always talked about it. It's just we finally got hit on it. I wish we had a little more time to plan this out and, and didn't have to go this temporary solution here. But with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions, any specifics. Superintendent Franty is also here and prepared to answer anything also.
Trustees?
Sludge from plant three, would it still be landified?
No, plant three, we've always hauled the plant two, just because there's no fields around. So we've already hauled that two weeks ago, and we would do that every year.
This includes plant three?
It includes plant three. But it'd be basically setting up temporarily here at plant two to haul. We're still working through, that's why I appreciate coming to you guys. I sent you, you know, an email with some stuff. We haven't given them authorization yet, but they're prepared to go. We're still, we submitted a sample today.
Well, last Wednesday, we submitted a sample for the landfill for Indian Creek. But today was for, there's going to be an actual pilot coming down, end of October, for a superpress. Basically, they'll come in for a day and, and press our sludge and it's part of the long-term project.
And we'll send you guys some stuff out at that point, if, you know, if you'd like to come out and watch and see what that entails, but that'd be part of the plan.
Well, landfill costs are on a tonnage basis.
Yes.
Is there any, is there any guarantee as far as percent solids that they'll de-water to?
Yeah, right. Go ahead.
After talking to Stewart Spreading, minimum would be 15, but they're optimistic that they'll in the low 20%. And Craig and I, actually, it's a number crunching today. If we, at $32 a ton, that's the landfill cost.
That's kind of a verbal we got from PDC, Marty Summer at PDC.
So with the tonnage, we're looking at, you know, anywhere between that 15 and 25,000 range.
Would be the gate fee at Indian Creek, if we can haul there.
Right.
We should have those tests back-
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. So we'll have a little more information there. So if that comes back with bad news, we'll get, I'll get back to you guys and we'll come up with Plan B. But I think talking to Marty at PDC, we feel pretty good that we can go to Indian Creek in Hope Dale. And hopefully that's our long-term place we can haul to also.
So, of course, your estimated volume is 750,000 gallons, which is $75,000-
Yes.
For stewards, where, and then we tie another-
Yes.
15, what'd you say, 15 to 25?
15 to 25.
Depending on your percent solid and, and the bulk.
So we push $100,000?
Yeah, yeah.
And right now, currently, we roughly spend about $60,000 a year for land application tests, including your tractor rentals, which cross implement was gracious enough to, with the circumstances, we had already signed contracts coming last year. They were at those two tractors a year, but graciously said, that go away with that for this year because of the circumstance. So that was 25,000. So that was $20,000 savings there.
Yeah.
And then substantial employee costs for overtime for land application.
The long-term probably won't be online next year this time. So you're probably looking at another year.
Probably not, but we're scrambling to see. I mean, the nice thing is, and I did put a picture up there just to give everyone an idea, that's our sludge lagoon there, that's a picture from Saturday. So that's the area that we'll be de-watering. Yeah, I mean, I think realistically, we're probably got a temporary solution next year. But luckily, we were able to turn the area north of the plant there where we're stockpiling material. We had anticipated a future building out there anyway. And it just, I mean, I think at least as far as the location and kind of a rough plan, we kind of know, you know, north of the digesters would be right where this new building would be. So I think, I think we're on the right track to expedite where we're lucky. We have some land around us that we own. It'd just be going through the process and all that. Now, you know, there's other things up in the air too. We are pulling arsenic out and de-watering sludge at water treatment. Those are other savings potentially is abandoning that, which was built about eight years ago, and just de-watering down at the wastewater plant. But those would be the things that we study to look at some of the cost savings too.
And that would be directly about $50,000 a year, correct?
Yeah, we spent $50,000 a year at the water treatment plant to de-water right now with Stewart Spreading.
Stewart will be using a belt filter press or a screw press?
Belt filter press.
But they're gonna pilot, you're gonna pilot a screw press or they're?
Yes.
Yeah, we're gonna pilot a screw press. They're out in North Carolina.
Yeah.
And the reason for that press, the screw presses, the cost savings, you know, a lot of smaller footprint energy savings.
Significant.
So we, I mean, like I said, we're, we wish we had more time to discuss this and we could keep land applying until such time. But actually just, Jeff was in my office the other day when the US EPA called again. And I think we're good with them. As long as we no longer land apply at this point, I should not receive another phone call. But if we are, I need to get back with them and discuss 2017 and going forward, what we wanna do.
I thought they were gonna come to town, lock Jeff up.
Yeah. Should be good right now. We can make that happen though. So I appreciate kind of the quick notice here and I'd be glad to answer any other questions. And we'll be getting with you guys soon on, like I said, if you wanna come out to the plant and look at that, even if someone from the public out there is interested, I'd, we'd be glad to show them some stuff too.
I think it's the right thing to do. The EPA would be proud of us to get us on a right leg to.
Well, it's been a long time coming.
Yeah.
And I, and Todd and I are not gonna, I mean, we're not gonna lose any sleep not having to have our employees out there in the fields in the middle of the night. You know, it's, I don't, I don't think we're gonna miss that part. And honestly, I honestly don't believe long-term there's a savings. I mean, I think it was coming at some point. It's gonna take, you know, up 10 years probably to pay off the capital improvements. But I honestly don't see the savings long-term to continue the land apply with the amount of work that goes into it, the tractors, the overtime, all that.
I would agree. Any other comments? We'll call the roll.
Newman.
Uh, yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Blounier.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next in front of you is item C. I'd like to ask for acceptance of proposal from Hanson Professional Services for professional services for the Cortland Street Phase One Engineering Project in an amount not to exceed 173,000.
Motion.
So moved. Second.
I will preface that 75,000 is what we budgeted this year and that was planned. So I, this is the approval of everything not to exceed, but we don't intend to spend more than 75,000 this fiscal. And this, I put the proposal in there, but basically with I-DOTs, there's, there's obviously more expenditure on the front end with engineering to get through I-DOT. And this would include, you know, topo, boundary survey, traffic studies, geometrics, soil borings, drainage study, environmental studies, and on and on. So it's a time, in my opinion, is the most time-consuming of the phases working with I-DOT. So that, this will be the first phase. We're still shooting for 2021, 22. And this is the project through PUATs where it'd be the 70-30 funding. So I'd be glad to ask, answer any other questions that you might have.
What the, what is the, currently the proposed improvement?
The proposed improvement would be to look at that whole corridor with, with traffic from North Morton to Main and synchronize all that.
Well, that's the fate, that's part of phase one.
Yeah, that's part of the phase one. But the improvements that you would see would be basically five lane on Cortland, basically from Walton where we ended all the way through Main Street and then improving the Main Street intersection also. One of the improvements you would see the most is as traffic comes into there, it would add an extra lane there on the west side of that intersection. So it would make it a little bit larger. And then this would also add signals to commerce at this point. And that is one area that I've, I've got complaints the last five years with traffic and all that through GND and the trucking. So I think that would be a significant improvement there too. But that's, that's the, that's the main thing, just widen to five, five lanes where you've got the bi-directional turn lane in the middle and it will line up to be able to, for both those intersections, to be able to have a dedicated turn lane there.
And the anticipated construction cost?
I wish I would have brought that with me. I had it, I think it was, I sent you the email a long while back. I should have updated that. I think we were getting 1.866.
That's the 70%.
That'd be the 70%. So if we had the 30 on top of that, that's where that would be. And I don't anticipate it being more than that. There are some utilities, there's some, I mean, so in this phase one, there'll be a lot of work with utilities. Sanitary should be good where that's at. That's obviously the biggest one we don't wanna deal with.
Water main relocated?
Uh, water main, yes, will be relocated.
Right away, what do you say, do you think?
Should be pretty good, except for around Main Street. There's a little bit right there. And hopefully through the boundary survey, we'll be able to, you know, through the phase one. But it's minor if we do. Nothing along the main corridor there. Uh, this will also improve the bike trail, the multi-use trail that we did on Cortland in front of Farm and Fleet, Sam Lehman. That will extend all the way to here, all the way to here, meaning Main Street. And then hopefully at the same time, we can look at that corridor. I know some of you expressed interest in that bike trail extending along Main Street to the south to get to people in town under the interstate bridge there. So it might be something we look at in conjunction.
How did this project become a priority for the village?
Oh, gosh, way back when, you know, there was discussions with Norm. I, obviously I think that Cortland improvements have been the, you know, main priority for quite some time, from veterans all the way to Main Street. So really through discussions with the mayor and, you know, I don't think there was a big public discussion on it per se. And as far as other prioritized projects, probably limited in Morton as far as those type of projects, you know, the Jefferson Street, the Cortland. So it rose to the top there. If you remember, we could have selected, you know, put in for Detroit, an overlay there.
Overlay or reconstruction?
It was, it was overlay. PUATs is allotting some monies for overlays.
But there was a long-term plans to complete that to Birchwood, right?
Not really. There was really never, and I wasn't here.
That was submitted as a quote phase one.
I wasn't here prior to that, but none of that was done basically south of where the limits are. So I don't know what those, you may know more than me as far as the discussions way back when.
Wasn't included in the project development?
I don't, I mean, it was always discussed as far as the bike trail, but I don't know that it was. And honestly, I'm not sure traffic, you know, would ever dictate that.
We were, we got the most votes for blacktopping Detroit or this.
Yeah.
And we chose this one.
But I'd have to look way back to see, but it's never been a discussion since I've been here. So maybe way back when it was. And obviously, you know, if you could justify that, an extension of a former project like Cortland too. Me personally, I just, I don't ever see Detroit as being widened to that extent, but that's me. I mean, the amount of traffic on Cortland comparable to Detroit is.
I think part of Cortland was the commerce drive coming into it, the semis, and trying to get the infrastructure done for business friendly and having it done before the rest of that gets all developed.
And there was a lot of discussion with Farm and Fleet. Farm and Fleet originally wanted to go next to Walmart. So that was kind of the race against time, assuming that would be developed before we were aware that there was a first right of refusal on that property. But, you know, also going north to Highland. So I would say that was and still is today, you know, the largest, you know, commercial corridor that we have. You know, North Morton, Cortland, I don't have those traffic numbers on me right now, but I would, I would say that's the highest traffic, you know, in the villages right there on North Morton. So a lot of emphasis since I've been here and prior has been put on those corridors. I don't know if that answers your question fully, but.
Well, I guess, I guess I would like to see the board as a whole have more input into prioritizing.
Sure.
Significant projects like this. The other thing is, is I believe we're intending to use motor fuel tax to pay our construction costs. And, you know, that's taken a significant amount of our motor fuel tax for some time. And there's many, many other uses, good uses of that motor fuel tax.
Sure.
I guess in the big picture, I think the board ought to have a little more input into, I guess, these kind of decisions.
Sure. And I can't disagree.
Prior to getting to this point, I mean, you know, we're, we're long past that. We've already got 70% STU federal money.
Sure.
Committed to it and, you know, we're not gonna back that all obviously. But, but I, I think the board as a whole needs to have more input into.
And you and I discussed that. And obviously this was way before you and some others were here. But I can't, I don't disagree with that and I look forward to more input on that.
I don't have a problem with that at all, trustee Newman.
And as far as the motor fuel, I mean, I mean, this is the first, this past year's the first year we've used that on anything. So the motor fuel tax, even prior to me, I'm not sure when that was decided, but that was always available. And you would know this more than me, where Morton was always in a position to do these projects and the money was always there. Motor fuel was always used for that, the construction.
I think they saved up motor fuel money for the big projects.
Yeah, I think that was philosophy of Mr. Wright, that these projects being that they were going to be basically constructed under the standards, I-DOT standards and whatnot, which would allow use of the motor fuel tax money, that that would be appropriate use for it.
Yeah.
And again, village in the past, general fund, whatnot, has had the money to, you know, put into our other street maintenance projects. And that's kind of, you know, coming to an end perhaps.
Yeah.
Unless things change. And again, I think, I would like to see more of a, you know, kind of a five-year plan or something long-range where, where you're headed in street, uh, street maintenance and capital projects and whatnot as a whole. And I think we've discussed this, Craig.
Yeah.
A little bit, just briefly. But again, I guess I just wanna bring it up there before the board.
Yeah.
And maybe move in that direction.
And the standards changed too, cause the PUATs money did the improvement of Jefferson out past Grace Church, where today that can't be done because you have to have jobs. You can't just go out and do a three-lane road. So the standards changed where I don't know of any major project.
The selection criteria that PUATs imposes.
Right.
To determine which projects they're gonna fund and not.
So I think.
Job creation, you know.
Transit.
Transit are a high price. There's no doubt that Cortland is, you know, meets that criteria probably better than anything. But I guess the point is still, I think the board needs to have more input when, when you're heading in that direction.
Sure.
And in street maintenance as a whole.
Yeah, and I would look forward to some input from you guys on how you would like to see that. I mean, I can, you know, we're always trying to stay ahead on, you know, and I'll submit a five-year plan to you guys on what we're thinking. But, you know, a lot of that stuff happens way ahead, you know, having the utilities we have, the gas, the water, you know, kind of getting those along the line. But I'll say we're in a really good position as far as our sanitary sewer in this town. Working with Todd now and I intend to actually have a disc ready. I know you even mentioned last time the condition of, you know, Harrison Street and some of those where we've been going through those and prioritizing those. But, you know, trying to get those to you guys in a timely manner, but also, you know, trying to stay ahead of, you know, the streets we have, you know. And this is the first year we did heat scarifying, some of those thing that we discussed at budget time too. So we're, we're trying new things, doing different things. But I'd be glad to get you guys information, you know, a little input from you guys on how you'd wanna see that. One thing that I do struggle with is, I'd love to meet with you guys in a room, but that's not, that's not practical with Robert's rules of order. If you know what I mean. So I'll be honest, I've struggled with that. So that's why I email you guys a lot. But if there's anything we can do or we wanna have a public meeting or do those, I'd be, I'm open to doing that. There's a lot of work behind the scenes that goes into it. And I'd be glad to share whatever information we have.
Well, we're obviously not planning any major big projects like this in the near future. And the past board knew about that for whatever reason for several years, so.
And I think PUAT, if you go back to PUAT, you're starting to see a transition from system expansion, which is what Cortland is. That's why there's a large push. I'm kind of in the middle. I know Jeff's policy now, you know, looking more to overlays in the, in the current state of our state. And even motor fuel tax, as you mentioned, that has been stagnant for several decades. System expansion is a tough thing for people to look at. Craig Fink's been a big proponent of that in Tazewell County. How do I expand my roads if I can't take care of my existing roads? So I'll be honest, I'm not sure if I'm gonna bring you too many things that are gonna be able to get, you know, voted through as far as system expansion. I think Cortland's probably the end right now.
And, and I don't think it's, it's really necessarily system expansion, but just, you know, what is your, what is your five-year plan for
Yeah.
Maintenance of your existing stru-, uh.
Sure.
And street infrastru-, infrastructure.
Yeah. So aside from PUATs, basically just anything in the business.
Again, the expense of this money plays, plays into that.
Sure.
That's funds that are available for, for maintenance.
Yep.
And I did have Craig take me out and watch that heat scarifying process. Wow.
It's hot.
Oh my word. I've never seen nothing like that before. Two trucks, big semis, nobody's driving them, they're on remote and 7,000 degree heat? Or what was that?
The machines are 700, so.
Yeah, oh my gosh, fires coming out of the, I wondered how they didn't blow up.
And that's not a perfect solution, but it's.
There was an education.
So yeah, I'd be glad to get back to you guys with five-year plan and love, love to get input.
Maybe something that says we're kinda before we're headed into next budget cycle and be, I guess, timing.
Yep.
I think with what Craig's doing, he's gonna have different ideas for.
And we're working on stuff as we speak. I know I talked with Todd the other day. He's, he's putting some things together and we should, I should be able to have a five-year, what we believe is a five-year plan. Obviously, things come and go even at budget. When it's presented to you guys, things can fall off and, you know. But I should have something within a couple of weeks before you guys start looking at it.
Cause this past year is the first time in 22 years we didn't spend $1 million on overlay. Okay. Any other questions on that? Not, call the roll.
Blounier.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Next item in front of you is item D. This is resolution 8-19. This is a resolution authorizing agreement with Bailey Nichols and Morgan Nichols for the Birchwood sidewalk proposal.
They're motioning.
So moved.
Second. All right, hopefully, I sent this to you guys a while back, as far as the location. This was an area where the homeowner was doing a lot of work, had a discussion with the mayor about connecting up two pieces of sidewalk. Obviously, it generates some questions from all of you, but I'm here today with a plan. I do have an updated cost for the sidewalk. I was able to work with Illinois Civil Contractors, and they're willing to use their prices on some of our other larger jobs like First Avenue as far as sidewalk. And the cost for the sidewalk would be twelve thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars. This is using unit prices. The biggest issue is there are two trees. The two trees, as you can see up here, right now, what's proposed with the owner and what's been drawn up as far as the right-of-way that we would receive via dedication would be a two-foot grass boulevard and a five-foot sidewalk. As far as in front, between the tree and the curb, it just will not work, in our opinion, due to the elevation change. At this point, Bailey's not here today, tonight, but at the time, he was unwilling to give us dedicate, you know, dedicate right-of-way behind the trees to go around it. So, that's where we're at, looking for approval of this. And then with that, there's an agreement in there with him that if he dedicates it to us, that we will put sidewalk in. That cost does not include the tree removal, which I anticipate to be a couple thousand dollars total. And then we're going to, the Village of Morton will seed it, so that would be the cost above and beyond the twelve nine four five. So, I'm anticipating the fifteen thousand range to be able to construct this. If approved, Julie's will be called in tomorrow, and they'd start working on it very soon.
This is the one section of Birchwood that back about probably fifteen, eighteen years ago, when they put curb and gutter down Birchwood, it was the only piece of property, we didn't have the right-of-way, and they had a fence in front of the old farmhouse, a high grade, and I asked Bob, why aren't we putting it there? And he goes, we don't have the right-of-way. He goes, Jeff, there'll be a day that we can get it. So, when I seen the big tree knocked down, the front grade knocked down, I thought, now is the time to connect the neighborhood, get the right-of-way for the future.
And Jim Beckendorf is here, not to call you out, but we had a discussion, and I know you're always more than willing to speak, but Jim's parents, I believe, were the original owners, correct?
Second owners.
Yeah, Ross were the first. So, Jim obviously had some interest in this, in the trees and stuff, so.
So, is there any other comments?
Yeah.
Can you elaborate what your interest is, Jim?
Yeah, it's just an issue where, you know, I wanted to come this evening basically with the idea of, you know, Craig mentioned, my parents actually bought that property in nineteen sixty-eight, and then only with my mom's going into the nursing home passing, did we end up selling the property. But it's a situation where those trees, you know, as Jeff correctly pointed out, it's a situation where when that fifty-four oh six and the lighting of changing, basically, one twenty-one over one fifty-five was coming, there's three walnuts, three hard maples in there. We didn't want those, the trees at that point. And so, as a result, no right-of-way was given back beyond that, so we didn't want the trees. Yeah, and I think any of you who know me know I'm not a tree hater, but that's not the issue. This is a, it's a personal nature as far as me, you know, like if one of the walnut trees, the other ones, maples, that were getting old and were taken down by Bailey. We were ecstatic by Bailey and Morgan having this property, because it's a third family in there. We were afraid, because we had many offers to buy this, two acres as development ground, you know, to be subdivided, not my siblings and I wanted. And so, I guess today I'm looking at it and wanting to go ahead and just raise the point, if there's a way to go ahead and keep the trees and deal with something, that would be my family's preference. Understand the logistics, trying to get it done, and understand Bailey not wanting to go ahead and give up additional right-of-way. We were there years ago, but not wanting to give up that right-of-way. It was all, whatever agreement is reached with Bailey, that's his priority, and that's great, we support it. You know, he and his wife, from that aspect. But just want to let you know, those hard maples have been there. Well, as I said, I was six-year-old when I moved into that house. They were not small trees at that point in time. I picked up a lot of walnuts with my mom, so there's a lot of emotions that have come back. That's why my boys are insane, they're like, let's not lose the grandma's trees. But it's obviously up to the board to decide.
I think in talk, I discussed this with you, Jim, and you thought they could be approximately roughly seventy years old? Based on when you lived there and when they were established?
Probably still in the twenties, so obviously both in the twenties, so.
And if they were to come down, if that was, just to bring that up, we've had discussions that you would be still interested in some of the trees for, you know, other personal purposes, so.
I mean, walnut furniture for my boys, and they want something of their grandmother's.
Do the property owners understand that those trees would have to come down to construct the sidewalk?
Yes. And after this, we'd have a meeting with Pat and them and go through all the details. But yeah, this was, it was a lot of back and forth. Actually, Brad Marks did a lot of that work, legwork, because he was out there working, just kind of working with. So, so actually Bailey was instrumental in, in the, you know, at the end of the day, that, you know, an agreement that the sidewalk would be two foot of green and five foot of sidewalk. So, he had a lot of input on the whole thing.
And no sidewalks on the other side, correct?
On the other side, yes, there are.
There are sidewalks on this side.
Yes.
The whole street?
That's part of it, there are sidewalks, you know, on the park side, and it's not that people can walk over there.
Neighborhood though, from a standpoint.
There's sidewalk all the way from Detroit to Maine, on the other side.
I've seen communities where they zigzag sidewalks around trees with no real consistency. Has that been considered at all?
Yeah, that was, that was discussed. I don't, at this point, he didn't want to give away, you know, dedicate any more property.
I see, so it's take the trees and put the sidewalk there and not go on to the property?
And originally, he wasn't interested in sidewalk at all, but kind of came back. I mean, I'm guessing he's got kids and, you know, those things, and sees an interest in the sidewalk, but he was definitely not pushing for sidewalk.
So, they, so the homeowners didn't initiate this? They didn't write the request?
No.
Craig, are there any situations where we have built sidewalk on easements?
I don't believe I'm aware of any, so I would say no.
But an easement could be discussed with Bailey, that way they still own the property.
I would say.
It's my understanding they're willing to dedicate it to us, so.
Well, the right-of-way.
He's saying go behind the tree potentially on an easement.
See if they'd be interested in easement behind the trees.
Yeah.
Because the sidewalk to the west is already set back significantly. Well, the sidewalk to the west is already set back, so we just, we would make that transition beyond the trees then.
Yeah.
And the project itself, roughly, we're talking about, based on the information you provided, it's two hundred and fifty feet of four-foot sidewalk, and the approach is being replaced.
Yes, because to meet ADA, and that's in the agreement, so it won't be ADA.
So, they're getting a new sidewalk and a new approach and reseeding.
Yeah.
And they're dedicating the right-of-way in exchange for that.
Yes.
And we're taking down trees and stump removal, all that. I mean, of course, we're paying for that.
But that's what we did when we put Birchwood through. I lived on Main Street, and there was no, it was all ditches, so when we went through, everybody got a new approach, sidewalks and curb and gutter.
Where's the, how's it, where's it coming from, the funds?
Ah, these would be, these would be general funds. Now, we do budget for sidewalk and curb and all that out of the street budget, so obviously, that would take the place of other things that would come up, and it would fall within what we budget. That's what I plan to pull it out of. I think I put that in my mail.
Yeah, I just, I have some strong reservations for a number of reasons. First of all, I mean, it's, I just think there's higher and better uses of those funds. For sidewalk installation, I can think of a number of areas around town that have a higher priority or higher need for needing replacement or just installation to make it safer for, to get more bang for the buck, I think, for the citizens in general. There, as was pointed out, we've got sidewalk completely on the north side of Birchwood that connects Detroit to Main Street. And I've been on the board eight years, and I'm not aware of, almost eight years, and I'm not aware of any reports or safety incidents or anything, so I don't, I find it hard to think it's a safety issue. So, then, does it come down to merely aesthetics to say it would look nice? But I just think for, we're talking of fifteen thousand dollars here, and quite frankly, it, I think we'd probably agree, it's going to be somewhere between fifteen and twenty. But I mean, we've had legal fees involved here, we got engineering fees, and we got village cost involved. So, it's going to be somewhere between fifteen and twenty, probably, safe. So, I just hate to see it go for this, I think is a limited use. It's not a safety issue that's a high priority. And for merely cosmetics, I just don't think that's good policy. I want, I don't need to remind the board, a couple of months ago, but we, we passed a deficit budget, and I think of the neighborhood of six hundred and seventy thousand in the general fund alone. And I know this is a small dollar amount in comparison, but we've got to show the public a good faith effort that we, we, we need to whittle away at it. And it's only, we're talking fifteen to twenty thousand maybe, and it's not high dollars in the grand scheme of things, but I think it sends the wrong message to the citizens and even our employees, quite frankly. I mean, earlier this year, when we go, we go through the budget process, and we always beat them up pretty good to make sure that, you know, they're lean and mean, they're, they're cutting back things that would be really nice to have, but, but they're maybe not essential. And they did a great job as best they could, and we still ended up with a deficit budget that we ended up with. And our goal, of course, is by the end of the fiscal year, we'll whittle that away, hopefully, and be able to start fresh with a balanced budget. But if we do things like this, I just don't see us getting there. So, I mean, I, I think it's a good project, a noble project. Is it a priority? By no means is it a high priority, and I just think we, it's sending the wrong signal if we, if we approve these funds for this.
Craig, is the gas main on an easement, or is that?
Yes.
How are those easements written?
I'd have to go back and look at that one, but I think it's just a utility, it wouldn't be for sidewalk.
Have we, has it been discussed with Bailey at all, the easement?
For the, okay.
Because trustee Belsley, I probably disagree with you a little bit on the safety issue. I think it is, you have a sidewalk, and even though you have a sidewalk on the other side of the street, you have no crossings in between there. So, if you're on one side, if you're on the one side of the street from starting at Main Street, and you want to go to the other, there's no, you know, you get all the way down to here, and then there's, you either cross the street or you turn around and go back. I understand, but you would probably figure that out before you walk all the way down there. But I think providing that continuity all the way through, where there's no, there would have to be no crosswalks there, I think is a, is an important safety improvement. I don't, I don't see it being an issue that, you know, you know, of dire need for, for a safety improvement, but I think it is something that we have the chance now to, to do with, discussions have been done with Bailey. I think it's, it'd be good to take advantage of that legwork that's already been done.
I agree with trustee Parrott in that there's an opportunity to, to create a bridge where there hasn't been a bridge. And I'm fortunate enough to have sidewalks in our neighborhood all the way around, and we, we walk just about every night and enjoy them. And I think people, if they're like me, would hesitate to walk across someone's lawn to get from one section of the sidewalk to the other. And going across the street, as you pointed out, trustee Parrott, it appears to be dangerous, and the opportunity is now to do this. Now, at the same time, I empathize with you, because I love trees too, I really do. I planted a dozen of them this last fall at a place that I have, and I love to watch them grow, and I think they're, they're beautiful, but you made a point there that your, your boys want memories of, of grandma and grandpa, and, you know, maybe a piece of furniture is an alternative to it. I think that's a pretty neat idea, not as good as the real thing, but given the situation, unless we can find an easement opportunity, maybe there is a middle ground. Maybe, we don't know if they, if they enjoy those trees that much, maybe they would allow that sidewalk to, to come in just a little bit. I don't.
I'd rather see, I'd rather talk to them about that too, because part, part of the thing too is, is if we're having this discussion, what if next winter we get an ice storm and those two trees go down?
Do they know?
We don't have this conversation.
Do they know their options?
Right, you just go right through. So, that's my, that's my struggle with, is the trees are actually temporary. The sidewalks and the easements are going to last longer than these trees that are left, well, most likely. That's my, that was my only concern with it, and I did same thing. I planted an ash tree with my dad after we watched The Natural. The ash war got it. It's a problem, but I'm going to make baseball bats out of them, which will be cool to give, to give away. So, I, I see that part of it, but I do. I just would personally, I would like to, to see, because the jogging of it doesn't bother me so much, so I'd like to, my point would be is to, I don't know if I made the motion, I think I did. I'd like to amend my motion for them to explore the easement side of it, to see if they would agree that, and then we can move our discussion instead of sitting here debating this for another fifteen minutes.
I think we should do it. I just think that we should investigate that option.
Yes.
Who gave the second motion?
Trustee Parrott.
Would you amend your motion too?
Yes. And Pat, I don't know if you have a comment on that, on the easement, but I guess my only question, and I like that, just, is there, I mean, the difference between right-of-way and easement, if the sidewalk's there forever, obviously, he would want that ground back at some point, so do we put some clause in there that?
I think.
I'm just asking that, those difficulties come up with those questions.
I think we need to have the conversation with him to figure out what his interest would be.
He might not be interested, so.
Yeah.
So far, he hasn't been, but maybe if the trees die, we move the sidewalk over.
That's one thing I wonder.
Is that what we phrase the easement by, the easements here for the sidewalk, but at such time that the trees die?
Perhaps.
And he takes them down, that.
Perhaps that would be a way to soften him to the idea of an easement.
Yeah.
But yeah, an easement, I mean, it's still his property, the easements for the, only for the use of the sidewalk.
Yep.
But when the trees die, we'll cut them down and move the sidewalk.
I guess that's my question, or do you just leave the easement there, like you're saying, then it would, it's just, you know, if you were ever to do something to the road or whatever, it's still his property, but the sidewalk would be there.
I approached the idea of the easement
Yeah.
without any preconditions or.
No, I like the idea, I just want to make sure if we're going to sit down and talk to him, is that an easement that's there in perpetuity for, you know, with the land for quite some time, or is there a?
I mean, again, I don't know, it looks to me like if you, I, there's certainly exactly how good your mapping is there, but it could be that the easement that's already there for the gas main, you could just amend, or I guess put another easement on top of that easement for the sidewalk. You can't do anything to that easement anyway, as far as building, well, you can anyway, because of setbacks.
I would agree with that.
Okay, well, then we'll table that till the next meeting and.
We'll reach out to him, and yeah.
Okay. All right, your next item.
Uh, next item is item E. This is Roger's item, but I'm going to take care of it tonight. This is the Tazewell County Zoning Board of Appeals, there were two cases.
Just a moment.
Yep.
Council says we have to call the roll now.
Okay.
First he decided, no, now we did, change your mind?
It's fine.
It's the most.
Table.
So, motion is table.
You made the motion, table.
I guess.
Right, and.
I second it.
So, now we're going to call the roll to table this.
Call the roll? Belsley.
Yes.
Bluenier.
Yes.
Pear.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Table.
Okay, I'm sorry, Craig.
No, you're fine. Item E, this is Tazewell County Zoning Board of Appeals case. There's two of them, eighteen dash thirty-nine Z and eighteen dash forty-six S. And they are just looking for a recommendation from us or comments as this lies within the mile and a half of the corporate limits.
Do we do these separately?
Yeah. Uh, well.
We haven't historically voted on it. In my opinion, and I mentioned this before, I don't think it's... I think it's within the authority of the director of planning and zoning to submit comment on the village's behalf. He's preferred to bring it to you for any comment the board wants included. We've not historically done a formal vote on it. It's on the agenda . So if you desire, you can.
But as far as our input to, to Mr. Spangler, I guess my input is, on the Winkler case, I don't see any, I don't have an issue with that. On the Morton-Soler, I personally believe that's too close to town. You know, this site, they do something like that, it's going to be there for a long time.
Yep.
I think it'd be appropriate to move it a little further out of town.
Yep. And Roger and I did discuss this, and I discussed it with the mayor today right before the meeting too. And I kind of put just similar, I echo yours as far as staff. We believe this area west of Tennessee and south of Harding should be reserved for future development, whether that be residential, light industrial. This is also, there's a map in front of you with a circle of where it's at. This also is an official map, not that it couldn't be changed, but, you know, there's, for quite some time, the dashed yellow is a future residential collector that runs right through the proposed site. Not saying that can't change, but that's something we should look at if this ever was changed, to be able to access that area. So that was staff comment that we definitely don't support that from the staff for the same reasons that you mentioned, Ken.
And I would also, I would also agree with trustee Newman and, and as well on the Soler, as well as on the Winkler. I do have a question on the Winkler. This came up not too long ago and I don't recall an issue back. Does anybody remember what they did before with this parcel that they're doing different now?
It's funny you say that, because I vaguely remember it too, but I, I, obviously, I haven't dove into this.
I know you can't, I thought it was to subdivide so they could sell pieces of it before. And then, I don't recall. I, Roger may know.
Yeah, I vaguely remember some discussions on the access to it, you know, and I assume that's the, there's a little flag spot there, but.
I don't remember that, but I do support both of yours.
I don't see any issue with it. I was more just curious. Looked back through it. I couldn't find.
Okay. And my, my intent for Roger is for me to respond to Tazewell tomorrow so we can be prompt, so.
But I would support trustee Newman's comments. Any other comments?
So I assume everybody's good with that general statement? Okay. I have two more announcements. Item F is the Fall 2018 Yard Waste Disposal Program is here again, and we are slated to start October 17th, which is a Wednesday. And then we're going to go this time pending, you know, if you guys have any comments on that, we're glad to change, but working with Todd through Sunday, November 25th. So we'd be closed again Mondays and Tuesdays and Thanksgiving and the Friday after, but we will be open the following Saturday and Sunday after Thanksgiving at this point.
Just hoping to be in adjustments with potential weather.
Yeah. We've extended the past two years even a little further than that, but hopefully this will take care of it, during that weekend right after Thanksgiving. I assume you're good with it, with your guys.
Yes, I spoke to Todd earlier tonight.
So hearing none, we'll start posting that.
Yep.
Should be good to go. Next is item G. This is our semi-annual hydrant flushing, which we would like to start Monday, September 24th. The last one was pretty rigorous in the spring. This time, we intend to do it for three weeks and run just two shifts this time. We run two shifts for 24 hours before. This time, we'll run two eight-hour shifts for three weeks and not the full unit directional. So hopefully that will take care of some things. We've still got a lot of work ahead of us though, when it comes to low chlorine residuals and flushing and all that. So this is much needed, but hopefully shorten it and we'll still be able to monitor and see some good improvements.
Just get it done.
I just have one comment about the yard waste program this year. I don't see anywhere on here where it mentions that it's for Morton residents only and it tends to be kind of a sticking issue sometimes. Am I, I don't know if you plan to post that or that.
It is that first line under the red, Morton residents.
In cabinet.
I won't elaborate that it's the big gold black, but, but I'm glad you mentioned that.
I stand corrected. I hope my wife doesn't see this.
I apologize. You put me in a tough position.
In regards to the hydrant flushing, I would again urge to move as quickly as possible to come up with a long-term solution for this problem, because we are wasting a lot of water.
Yeah. And kind of, we're, we're working on the pilot study. I'm trying to coordinate. Andy Curry from Current Associates and Dave McMillan EPA. I think they're going to come up here in a week or so. I might send an email to you guys if you're available. I'll get you the time. You're more than welcome. If there's anyone from the public, I, I'm probably going to invite just some, you know, a few people if they're interested that have expressed interest in the past in water treatment. We're going to come out and talk about it, talk about our results. But we're seeing even this past week, some really good results with the pilot as far as ammonia removal. So we're excited about that. Not sure where that'll take us, but I think we're going to have that next discussion with, you know, consultants and EPA and see where we go from here. And again, that, that whole pilot, there's nowhere in the state of Illinois that is in full production of that type of process. But other states, Wisconsin, Iowa are. I know EPA's eager to get there due to the problems that we're having and many other central Illinois communities are having also in regards to ammonia.
All right.
So we're working hard.
Village trustees, any of you have anything?
I know you have probably already turned out the door, but I did think of something that I want to remind the residents. They didn't get a bill for their utilities as of yet this month. They won't receive a bill until the 18th and it will be due on the 27th. And if they have any questions, just to call us at the Village Hall.
Okay. Thank you, Julie. There's no need for closed session, so if we could have an adjournment, a motion for adjournment?
Salute.
All of you in favor?
All right.